It's seven oh one. I am going to call the Eastlime Inland Wetland Agency Meeting of November eighth, two thousand and twenty-one to order. Let's see, so today we have Phyllis Berger, we have Jason Diebold, we have Dave Schmidt, Don Fimister, Gary Upton, I'm Kristen Chantrell, and I saw Paul Daigle and Sue Spang, oh, in the, uh, Sue Spang, sorry, as a recording secretary. And we'll start with a Pledge of Legions.
I pledge my allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, um, looks like we have an addition to the agenda today. So, I need you to get in a motion form. Okay, um, I'd like to make a motion. Do I hear a motion, um, to add under the agenda under new business, uh, the request of Jason Bazaliap has Construction LLC for the release of a five thousand dollar bond for two eighty-three Boston Post Road and for the release of a twenty-five hundred dollar bond for two eighty-five Boston Post Road.
I will move that.
Alright, Dave, second?
I'll second it.
Don, all those in favor? Okay. Is this where I can also change the agenda items out of order?
Yes.
Okay, so I, do I hear a motion to?
Versus the, we do have a public hearing that has to be voted. So we have to, and that's for, to get, bring, put any, or not.
Oh, got it, okay. Okay, so then I might as well just say where we are, alright. Nope, that's me. Alright, so now, uh, public delegations, public delegation is the time when members of the public are invited to speak to the commission about certain matters, issues or concerns related to approved wetland permits and in-house proposals or general topics of discussion are open to comment. Agenda items, referrals, applications subject to a decision by the commission, a public hearing, or in litigation may not be discussed. I think you can kind of come up, just state your name and your address, please.
Sure. My name is Donald Danila, D-A-N-I-L-A. I live at twenty-four Patagansett Drive, Eastlime.
Can I just stop you right there for one second? Is this in regards to the application we're gonna hear today?
No.
By chance, it's completely separate?
Completely separate.
Got it, okay.
I want to let the, uh, agency know that I'm an appointed member of the Eastlime Commission for the Conservation of Natural Resources and the Nyonic River Watershed Committee. But I wish to note that these comments that I'm about to make are mine alone and I'm not speaking for either of these groups. At the July twelfth Inland Wetlands Agency meeting, the Wetlands Enforcement Officer, Mr. Gary Geishol, reported issuing a permit for the land alteration for a parcel of land on fifty-one Boston Post Road, the site of the long-gone Lulu's Restaurant. As you know, this site is to be developed by Noble Gas as a fuel station, convenience store, and fast food restaurant, primarily serving interstate travelers. At this meeting, Mr. Geishol stated the development was about two hundred and eighty feet from the nearest wetland. This is within the town's three hundred-foot jurisdiction boundary. And Mr. Geishol stated that the only proposed work within the upland review area is the detention basin with the drainage discharging into the state drainage system, thence into the upper Nyonic River. However, I would like to note a statement found on the Eastlime Town website under purpose and jurisdiction for this agency, that the jurisdiction boundary, and I emphasize here, can extend further if there's a potential for impact. At this meeting, the Inland Wetland Agency members expressed concern, particularly about the potential for fuel spillage, and moved to reject the approval of the application. Members wanted to instruct the applicant to come before the agency for a determination of holding a public hearing. The motion was approved unanimously. At the August twelfth Inland Wetlands Agency meeting, under reports enforcement, members again asked about this development's permit approval, which had been revoked by their vote. Mr. Geishol reminded the members of a letter from the town attorney stating that the agency did not have the authority to revoke the Wetlands Enforcement Officer's permit. As an aside, I could not find this letter in any of the materials posted on the town website. Mr. Geishol further stated that the agency should discuss guidelines concerning administrative permits. The minutes noted, and I quote again, "The agency would like to have it added to the next agenda for discussion." Where I'm assuming "it" refers to guidelines concerning administrative permits. Unfortunately, at least by the record I reviewed, viewed on the Eastlime Town website, there's no further mention of this issue to date, including nothing on either subsequent agendas or agency minutes. I find two things about this to be troubling. One is the failure of the agency to proceed with an open and forthright discussion about administrative permit guidelines, especially when members stated that this would occur. Secondly, and more importantly, is the issuance of a permit for this proposed development without the full agency's oversight and a chance for public input. A large facility likely to serve hundreds or more people each day that will dispense gasoline and diesel fuels, have a restaurant and restroom discharging their waste into a septic system, and densify groundwater into the Nyonic River, significant impervious surfaces discharging stormwater runoff that will include heavy metals and fluids from vehicles, and the inevitable superficial pet waste deposits all beg that this development should have, should have received more scrutiny by town agencies, professional staff, and its citizens. We all know the value of the Nyonic River, not only to town residents, but to all citizens of the state in the present precarious state that it is in, at present. I am part of a group that solicited a review of this project's plans by a professional engineer, who had many reservations about its design. As such, there's much more I could state about it here. However, it appears that I and others will not get a chance to do so with this agency. Thank you for the opportunity to speak about this.
And correct me, we can't really respond.
I'm not supposed to.
Right, okay. Alright, is there anybody else here to speak to public delegation? Um, so now I will open up the public hearing, um, the application of Kristen Clark, P.E., for Cold Spring Lot Management, LLC John Dravik, owner of Nottingham Hills Subdivision Phase Five, prepared for Kristen Clark, P.E., English Harbor Asset Management, LLC for an eight lot subdivision of property at one twenty-one Upper Patagansett Road, Eastlime Assessors Map, thirty-five point O, Lot forty-four.
Morning, or good evening, man, chairman and commission members, yeah.
You're the second one that's done it tonight, so.
Yeah, sure, you move the clock an hour and everything goes to hell. Paul Garrity for English Harbor Asset Management, I had a conversation briefly with Mr. Geishol beforehand. It's my understanding that, um, some of the documents we submitted last week in response to concerns or questions raised by the town engineer and staff, um, were unable to review, be reviewed because the town engineer's not here, um, and won't be able to see them until I think sometime this week in order to provide his comments. So we thought it prudent if we could to ask for a two-week extension, um, on this going forward with the public hearing. The only other item we're waiting for publicly, or excuse me, for, for responses is Ledlight Health District. We did receive a response last week, we're in the process of making the changes that they requested, should have that to them the next day or two. So that at least when we come in to present our matter, we would have everything complete for this commission to review.
Yes, I'm glad you explained that because I was looking online, like, there's not information here at present. Okay, so two weeks is what you're looking for?
Yeah, two weeks, correct.
So, uh, November twenty-second? And would that, Gary, would that allow enough time for our engineer to review, comment, and then?
I, I'm just, I have a conflict the following week. I might guess, similar, but did we, in the week, we'll have his comments, you know, to address, respond accordingly. As you're indicated, the outside of course bind, there's also minor issues with the Ledlight Health District, so I think two weeks. I've been talking session with him, he felt two weeks is sufficient.
Yeah, in terms of what Ledlight's recommending, we're agreeable to it, so we'll make those changes. With, with respect to the town engineer, we had a meeting with him and Mr. Geishol a few weeks ago. Our engineer responded accordingly with that. This point, my understanding with talking with the engineer today, that we're only waiting to hear from Alex's comments on that to make sure that we've addressed his concerns, so.
My question is, the public hearing was opened now, and that sets the clock ticking. Could this comment have come before us making the public comment? Or should it have come before us opening up public comment?
I'm sorry.
It's been open.
So we, we opened.
We opened last month.
So we have thirty-five days to conduct it. Um, in the process of review, we've, we've wrote blocks, if you will. So in order to, while the public hearing is open, the applicant has the opportunity to address those deficiencies in the application. Um, moving forward, if we close the public hearing this evening, then the applicant has no opportunity to respond to any of the staff comment that may be generated. And then it's questionable, you know, how much of that can the commission actually consider? Because the public hearing is then closed. So by accepting an extension allows the applicant additional time. They are, they do have an episode of sixty-five days of extension time for which they can request.
Got it.
Alright, and, and I'll provide a, a letter for the record tomorrow indicating that we did request the extension until what date?
Okay, okay, so are we looking then to have a, a meeting on the twenty-second?
Yes.
Okay.
And if we would, we need to close the public hearing.
Okay.
On the twenty-second?
On the twenty-second.
Does anyone have a conflict on the twenty-second?
I will not be here.
You will not be here?
I don't know.
It is Thanksgiving week.
Yeah.
I'll be here. I think, if you're willing.
Is that enough to make a decision?
We need four.
No, we will need just a quorum to close the public hearing.
I'll be here.
Once the public hearing is closed, then the agency has sixty-five days to render a decision.
Okay. Alright, so we can move ahead with rescheduling for the twenty-second? Do we need a motion for that?
Yes. Yes, you do.
I move we grant an extension until November, October, November twenty-second, sorry.
I'll second it.
Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, thank you very much.
See you in two weeks.
Enjoy the rest of your morning.
Seven P.M.? Got it, okay. Alright, moving on then, the acceptance.
Did you close the public hearing without asking for any public comments?
No, we did not close the public hearing.
You continued it to November twenty-second.
The acceptance of minutes, uh, meeting minutes as of October fourth, two thousand and twenty-one, special meeting. Does anybody, anybody like to make a motion to approve the minute, minutes?
I'll move approval.
I just have a comment, I think, you know, there was a public comment, and it should be noted at least, on those minutes?
The end of the meeting, public comment?
Oh, jeez, really?
Well, they're supposed to be accurate.
Yeah, you're right, if something happened, I guess. Mr. Bowelins?
Is it that, I look at the minutes or something?
Have we already closed the meeting, though?
We hadn't closed the meeting.
No, we hadn't.
But he just wanted to make a comment.
It was out of order.
Well, it took a turn.
Yes, it did.
That's for sure.
Yeah, I'm not sure where you would put that, under reports, maybe? It was, it was out of order, so.
Could you put it, public comment out of order?
Hmm.
When was it, when, when was the comment made?
Um, when we were discussing the.
The end of the meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah, we were basically wrapping it up.
Yeah.
It, it wasn't adjourned, I, I recall, I stood up and I asked the agency, did I hear someone call? Or make a motion for, to adjourn?
I did.
And, and I guess, Phyllis, there was a motion, in the meantime, Mr. Vialavon was speaking kind of over top of me and I guess whoever else, being that David and Mr. Comster, or I don't know, there was some banter back and forth. So I don't quite, don't recall exactly what they said completely. I didn't directly, I walked into the room, knocked on the door. So, I guess, that was.
It was not an agenda, I don't know, public comment?
No, no.
I think it was a response to the previous applicant's, uh, comment about, what do I do next, like, who do I call? And I responded, I'll contact you, and that, the door that opened up, oh, he can speak, I can too.
It was out of order.
I would just note that it was out of order. Public discussion, it was out of order.
So no, no content of the discussion, just, yeah.
Yeah.
So we make our motion to amend the minutes from last month's to reflect this out-of-order remark?
I will make a motion to accept the minutes as amended.
I'll second, Phyllis.
Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright. Next official report?
Couple of things, looks like you guys are still on Zoom raising your hands when you vote, that's pretty good. I just, uh, wanted to say, there's not much new in town, obviously elections were completed last week. Uh, from a business standpoint, there's not much on our agenda for Board of Selectmen, we only have two meetings left. But this is my last meeting, so I want to thank each and every one of you for the service you've given to the town. Some of you, uh, for a couple of years, Phyllis, for a little bit longer. Um, but it's been a pleasure for me coming to this meeting, I've learned a lot. A couple of agencies I wasn't directly involved with are in my elected and/or appointed positions. But I appreciate what you do for the town. As you're well aware, as I am, you can never make a decision that pleases everybody, so to the best of your ability, based on the information you receive, do what you think is best for, for, for the town and for the residents. So, thank you very much, I appreciate it, and, uh, continue, good luck with your work going forward. Thanks.
Alright, new business, um, application of Evan Cooper, owner, for a permit to repair damage to a stream as a result of Tropical Storm Henry at Two Girly Road, Eastlime.
I don't know, I'm back, I was here a month ago, I guess, showed you the pictures and the damage from the storm. And, um, we've got a plan to rebuild and restore. I know a couple of people walked, walked the site. Um, but, you know, basically water came over the road, blew the yard out, and just want to repair it because now I've got water where I used to have lawn, and it's eroding towards my house. So we're trying to use, this was, um, when John Quinn who owned the house before me, he had issues, so he fixed them. And, um, so basically, like, right here is where the, the large stones stopped. And then, you know, the water came up over the road, the culvert was fully full, so that's, that, that narrow culvert just increases all the water force. And it blew this wall apart here, and now I got, you know, water here and here. So what I'm trying to do is put, how we have these large stones here, just put the large stones running this, you know, fully across, because that held, that part of the bank held. And then after we put the large stones in to just, um, refill this area here, which is now underwater, and, um, replant, and we talked to Gary about some different types of plants to put over here. So I don't know how much detail you need me to go in there, but you saw the pictures last time, I filed the permit. I don't know what else. And you guys walked this, some of you walked the site, so.
I think to kind of summarize, uh, basically the plan that was previously approved, designed by Robert Fanner, um, that Mr. Quinn put in, as that work held, by anticipation that in the same design downstream, that work would still hold key here, I think he's vegetating the bank after the stone is installed. So that, uh, basically was my recommendation to the homeowner, is to follow the same plan that was, that we know worked. Um, obviously, anytime you, you line a channel with stone, you're going to increase flows. But in this case, it's, it's going to create more of a damming effect and just turn the channel back to where it originally flowed.
Does the culvert act like a hose nozzle?
Yes, basically, it's just everything funnels, the, the stream funnels down to the culvert, and then it shoots through it, and now it's coming out of there faster than.
And the turbidity is.
Renewal effect, if you, if you sail, like, I sail, you go in between two islands because the current rips through it. That is insane.
No, I let them retort through my backyard, so, I got you.
Yeah.
He came into the water.
I think had John not done that work, we would have saw all the scour, more scour there. Um, then, so, then where we did, so.
So any negative impacts from any of this, really?
Uh, negative impacts is during construction while they're doing the work and having materials slough off into the water course and downstream. It is at the bottom of the watershed, if you will, before it discharges to, uh, the Nyonic River, uh, just to have the influence. And I think that there's another, as we walked down, uh, to the rear of the property, there was a, another little dam, a little waterfall, uh, somewhere about in there is where the tidal influence stops because you can't get up over that elevation. So, uh, everything from that area back is considered in the wetland, where of course.
So you put down like mylar and stuff to mediate that and, and, and hay or anything to kind of stop it, or?
Yeah, the, uh, I, I think, once, the, the proposal was to install sandbags to act as a dam, pump out the water behind it, fill it.
Yeah.
And then reestablish the lawn vegetation, and then plant the banquet plantings. Um, I, thinking about that, my thought would be to possibly even just leave that sandbag, and just like they did up in Giant's Neck Heights with the upper pond, plant the back.
Put it on top of grass and cover it, too?
So you, you'll cover the grass, you'll close, so let the muds hit. Um, and as that material takes over, uh, that's going to help stabilize that because the geotextile fabric will eventually break down, or be, and then theoretically, in about ten years, it'll be just done with a vegetated burn.
As long as you don't have another storm.
And close it out.
Well, the next hundred year storm, which will be in another ten to fifteen years, the way we're going. But at least the stones will stay. My theory is the stones will stay. Are you correct? Yeah, in twenty years, someone's going to be back here probably going, I gotta refill the area behind the stones. But the large stones will at least hold that bank so that it doesn't just keep blowing down. Because the problem is that first, after that first area where it breached, if, now when the water, when we get rainstorms, it swirls this way, it's swirling at my house, so it's just gonna, if I leave it, my concern is it's just gonna erode towards the foundation of the house, and then it becomes, yeah, a bigger issue. But there is the risk that, you know, it'll, it'll, it'll overflow, it'll push, because the water, I mean, you were there, you saw, the water was over the road, which is, so I'm standing here, it's, it's above my head, so you can't stop it. This will hopefully do some, some control.
How quickly have you found the contractor to do it?
What's that?
Have you found a contractor that's going to get you going?
Yeah, you, uh, oh, I heard you guys mention his name, Jason Bazaliap. He gave me a quote and the plan and everything in terms of putting the sandbags in and he's got stone available and dirt, so I'd hope to get it done before rainy season? Hopefully the end of this year?
Yeah, hurricane season.
Versus in the spring when you had all the waterfall coming down.
Well, in, in regards to the timing on this, um, we, we can't actually render a decision this evening, off the application, because that's just fourteen days. But short of that, uh, just, just education, and we did refer the application to the town of Waterford, uh, that will happen today. So, by the time we have the next meeting, the statutory time period, thirty-five days, we'll have a last, a, a mandatory decision on the next meeting.
So would that be on the twenty-second? Or is that the special?
It, it, yeah, that's the special meeting for the public hearing. It would be the December meeting.
December, okay.
So is this something that you can do yourself as our agent?
I cannot because the work is being directly, done, being done directly in the water course.
Oh, yeah.
For our regulations, I can't.
His lawn has become the water course.
His lawn has become the water course. The, the only way I could manage it is through reinforcement action. And technically, there's no violation going on, so.
So early December, we'll make our decision and?
Yeah, uh, I would note that, uh, I did propose some changes to some of the vegetation in this area, to sea grasses, the ones that you saw there, um, just as a suggestion, the, obviously, uh, something large like that, as a deep root structure, would be recommended, so we can talk to you.
Yeah, because the stump held, the stump held and the sea grasses held.
So saying as the homeowner, if you have a different, stack you want, just something with a deep root system should work, but just fine.
Okay. Alright, thanks.
Thank you. So you'll let me know, do I have to come again in December?
Uh, you can.
December, what is it, December?
Alright, Gary will just call you and tell you when it's going to be great.
Yeah, it's just an hour waiting, um, you know, it is possible that Waterford does make comments, uh, moves to certain.
You'll let me know where Waterford makes.
If they have any comments, yeah.
Thank you.
Alright, so next under new business is the request of Jason Bazaliap has Construction LLC for the release of five thousand dollar bond for two eighty-three Boston Post Road and for the release of a two thousand and five hundred dollar bond for two eighty-five Boston Post Road, Eastlime.
Um, I apologize, I don't have these files in here. For small bonds, I did have, uh, I want to say it was two eighty-five? I believe it was two eighty-five, I did ask Mr. Bazaliap's, uh, and his engineer regarding, there's supposed to be some stone check dams along the, uh.
Is it the driveway?
The, the driveway, uh, kind of parallel with the access drive to Patagansett Lake. When he installed were stone check dams versus the concrete that were on the plan. I've asked him to either install the concrete or provide us a letter from the engineer stating that the stone check dams are sufficient and will function just as concrete. I've yet to receive that, of course, bonds, uh, if you have, then I don't have the file, so my apologies. I would not take action on that.
Okay, okay. So, motion to continue to the next meeting?
Please.
Okay.
I make a motion to continue this discussion at the next, at the December.
December meeting.
I'll second it.
Okay, all those in favor? Alright, moving on to pending applications, application of Kristen Clark, P.E., for Cold Spring Lot Management, LLC, John Dravik, owner for Nottingham Hills Subdivision Phase Five, prepared, prepared for Kristen Clark, P.E., English Harbor Asset Management, LLC, for an eight lot subdivision of property at one twenty-one Upper Patagansett Road, Eastlime Assessors Map, thirty-five point O, Lot forty-four. In this, we're going to make a motion to continue, continue to next meeting?
Uh, no, you don't have to do anything here, the, the public hearing, I won't continue, so.
Okay. Okay. Old business, uh, request of Alfred H. Smith, owner, for a five-year extension of the inland wetlands permit, number sixteen through twenty, for property at two nine seven Boston Post Road, Eastlime. Um, I'm curious to hear from the people who attended, saw firsthand.
I have comments, it hasn't changed.
Okay, I didn't think so.
However, uh, I would suggest that we recommend silt fences around that pile of dirt. I don't know, Jason, do you have any comments?
This was my first time going to that site, so I don't know what it looked like before, but it, it looked like a graveyard for old machinery. And, uh, I'm not sure how.
That's pretty much what it is.
I mean, it's, it's right next to a freshwater reservoir, so it's troublesome. Um, so I, I'm a little hesitant to extend without kind of really offering some sort of mitigation. So I think a silt fence or, or some further action might be necessary.
Yeah, this is, this is just an application for that pile.
Yeah, the, well, the permit that was issued was for the stockpile of material, which, uh, silt fence, I think backed by hay, though.
Which is not there.
Not there. So that's all the permit was for. So there's, there's other uses out there that are occurring. And you argue that it's all in there. But as far as the regulated activities are concerned, the stockpile of material and the moving of it, uh, it's up to you. That's regulated, so you don't have to renew the permit.
Yeah, if we don't extend it, do they have to remove it?
They would have to remove the pile and, or come back in, make an application.
So, there is.
Application before they even seem to continue the activity, and that may be an appropriate thing to do, uh, to revisit the proposal, ask more questions. An application before they continue the activity, and that may be an appropriate thing to do, to revisit the proposal, ask more questions.
There is a great big hulking resting piece of machinery.
Oh wait, but it's an antique.
It's an antique. But I mean, for all intents and purposes, it's been integrated into this pile. So if one were to be removed, the other one would be removed. Am I correct?
Yes.
Maybe because the price of steel is up, you encourage them to recycle.
He said somebody is interested in purchasing it.
Which is cool.
Really? In next year.
Next year.
Yeah.
So, sounding from the description and my own observations, certainly, I think the silt fence required, you could say you're violating the permit if you don't have the silt fence. I think, you know, again, the history here, I've issued some orders, enforcement orders going out to the site, trying to clean up. And I think today it hasn't cleaned up to your satisfaction. So maybe rather than require them to go and apply for a new permit, they want to continue the stockpile.
But I thought they requested a new, or, you know, another extension several days prior to its expiry, that's what you told us last month.
Correct. So we're acknowledging the fact that they've requested before the permit expiration, they can request an additional, up to additional five years of extension time. And so that's, hey, we're part of the time, we use another five years. If we don't renew it, they just have to come back in and reapply. So at the end of, now, if we did renew it, at the end of ten years, there's no more, they can't, they can't request any additional time or extension. They have to make application for the permit. So, you know, saving five years or, you know, I think, my opinion would be to require them to get part.
Seems the longer we allow him to continue, he's just gonna push every single.
He had a lot of, that excuses.
I mean, when is it gonna go away?
And we haven't seen silt fence or fencing hay bales around that pile in two years, so.
The only, I think, saving risk there is that the perimeter of the partial that prevents the lake is that, they won't.
Invasive, that's it.
Well, it drag my.
I'll take it, but.
It's keeping it a bay.
Ideally, it would be great if we rid the invasive, but it's the only buffer the lake has from what's going on there.
Which means we deny his application for an extension.
Okay, so how do we word it?
So, we make, do we make a motion on the extension?
To deny the request for extension.
Yeah, I would make a motion to deny the request for extension.
Do you have a reason? Is that nice to give a reason?
If we deny this, we don't need to offer any further comment, you just have to come back.
Yeah.
You wanna get a second?
Second, is anyone seconded?
I'll second.
Discussion now? Anyone wanna discuss?
Should we give a reason though to him as so far as why? Or just say, nope?
Our recommendation would be if we could, and you could say, you know, the site has had past violations that have not been fully corrected. Have that pile here.
Well, and it's not in compliance with the current permit?
There you go.
Basically, yeah, that's, that's it. It's December, twenty twenty. And then they have nineteen parts, so it's been ongoing.
Some motion.
So we need to amend the motion?
Because it's not in compliance with the current permit.
Nice.
Anybody else?
I think that's enough.
I think that's enough.
There you go. It really carries good.
Okay, we're good, so we need to.
Yeah, we want to be specific, and I have a silt fence and a river control.
How specific do we need to get? Okay.
So all those in favor now? Yes?
Aye.
Yes.
Okay. Alright, moving on to the chairman's report. I have nothing. The inland wetlands agent report?
Um, I don't have much to report. I haven't issued any new permits since our session meeting. I've got several pending for me, I can do them as like, or I can put it in this meeting. Seven pending. I just know that the increase in the volume of permits has increased probably from one to two a month to about five to seven.
Why do you think that is?
Could be increased the upland per acre.
Okay, I just want, okay.
But so is the money.
Yeah.
Well, at the end, we are generating some revenues from it, so, you know, that's a positive.
Perhaps the town leaders could be persuaded to give you that support that you couldn't use.
Not unless by them.
Kind of the reflection with leadership, and that and ideas as well. And so I have some of my own root for downstairs, hopefully this will be heard, and if I'm lucky enough to carry out. If I'm successful, well, great, on that one. I don't know, but yes, I'm looking, we do have money that was allocated in the budget for some part-time help. So I'm going to open up the first select and see how best to utilize their funds, I think just even in-house, possibly. So we have staff here that are well qualified that could possibly pick up some additional hours. That small pocket of money. And then moving forward, looking into the future, revenues generated here, there may be opportunity to turn something like that into a full-time position. More of a part-time position. And sixty thousand dollars is about quarter of time, so, you know, in that respect, we're gonna work to increase that and see where it goes.
So how come some of those items that you approved don't show a dollar amount for the current?
They should if they don't, on the.
On the sheet, I don't have a copy of the sheet.
Okay, so then that might be.
There were a couple, like there was a hundred sixty and then there was maybe a house, which is another thing that we've got to talk about as far as what you can approve and not.
So in terms of houses, I mean, now I can move an entire house, get the driveway and charge the max fee. Takes me fifteen minutes to review, and I'm making a thousand dollars in that fifteen minutes, that's great. If you think about it that way, right? And because it's over a hundred feet from any well, as long as I look at it and say, okay, it's got E S controls, there's really no reason to deny that application. So, you know, from that perspective, it's directly generated.
I know, but shouldn't some, some of this stuff come before us? I mean, I don't wanna beat on the gas station, but it's, you know, the general concern.
Yeah, it's a great example of, you know, what, if the agent has felt that my issuing that permit was beyond what you really intended the agent to do, then I think that's where we need to look at the regulations and go to modify that. I look at that as thirteen thousand square feet, two hundred and eighty feet for the nearest well, and greater the regs have changed since November twenty twenty. So it isn't regulated activity. Thirteen thousand square feet of activity, when I look at the building, the pumps, the entire use is outside of that three hundred foot. So if they even move the basin outside of it, I wouldn't look at it either. I wouldn't have looked at it under the hundred foot of the review area. They wouldn't even ask if they need a permit. So, while I acknowledge that Mr. Dino's comments were correct, that the agency can't extend their jurisdiction, we have to demonstrate how that development is going to adversely impact the water course, two hundred and eighty feet.
But it's a gas station, we're not talking about a house. Gas stations, tanks leak.
They do. I, but we got a Costco where they put tanks adjacent to.
And we did a public hearing on that.
Agreed. But these tanks aren't adjacent to the water course, they're beyond three hundred feet of that. That's where I'm, I'm struggling with.
And just out of curiosity, he also, he also mentioned the letter from the attorney.
Yes.
Can we see that letter?
Absolutely.
And can we also, we talked, I'm skipping around here, but the, the purchase of the property, halfway property, you were gonna send a letter? And have you sent that letter?
Yeah, working on it, it's drafted, so I have to sign on to this agency as well as the土地 commission, so those are in works, I'll get them to.
Okay, can we have those listed on the agenda for the next one?
Oh, you want the letters on there and just go?
Yeah, because the public isn't seeing what we're doing. And I, I think we really need guidelines for what you can approve. It covers you too, that way.
Based on the regs now, if the activity is in the upland, I can issue that permit. And I just use thresholds that I know from practice in the industry, which is a hundred cubic yards of material. If you're moving anything more than that, typically you give it to the commission. And then if you're closer than twenty-five feet to any wetland water course, typically give it to the commission. That's, I think, most of my colleagues across the state kind of use similar standards. Obviously, different bodies of water, those standards might increase depending on the sensitivity of them. And what we do know from different regulations across the state, particularly in the Northwest Hills, where they have five hundred foot upland review areas, is because of steep slopes, and they have a criteria that they use to establish those, those upland review bodies. So that is something that we did discuss during the public hearing, when we discussed increasing the upland review area, maybe something we could take a look at. Because there could be bodies of water like, like Patagonia, Powers Lake, that are within that corridor, that, that P R well, that may warrant a five hundred foot of the review around those specific waterways.
We could totally protect waterways that way.
Yeah, but I don't recall, and I've been here a long time, the agent passing things like a house, you know, without coming through this, you know, commission. And it's only been within the last, you know, maybe six or seven months that things have come through. Like a two-family house that you passed last month.
Well, I have to make a decision and exercise my discretion when I look at these applications. And if the, if the, if the site is, you know, beyond a hundred feet and within the two hundred and three hundred foot upland review, here's your permit.
But how do you know there's not a public interest in it?
I don't. The applicant, what we have to let the applicant know is that they have the right to publish the notice of the, of the decision in the paper. And that starts a clock on their behalf. But they fail to publish that notice, anyone can appeal it at any time. So if I have a permit and I fail to publish a notice that was issued by the agent, and I walk up my back home, my neighbor wants to appeal the decision, realizes, hey, you never published notice, I can do that, I can appeal that decision.
But how many people in the public know that?
Probably very few.
I, I just think we need transparency. That's, that's one of the reasons that we passed having the signs, you know, for a public hearing. And I think a lot of the people in the public are looking for that. I don't think we should hide anything.
Transparency as it pertains to the rules and regulations of the town that are built along that, again, with, you know, there are nineteen thousand people in town, and there are nineteen thousand different interpretations of those regulations. And at the end of the day, it's the agency who gets to interpret that, ultimately. And as your agent, I do some interpreting whenever we do applications. So on the one hand, I mean, I'm more than happy to send every application that comes forward, if it's not a deck, shed, or pool. But I think you'll be inundated with paperwork. And you wanna look at every house, that, that's fine. I think, you know, the standard practice when building homes is you look to create vegetated buffers where you can to separate lawns from the wetland and the water course, so you can have plenty of vegetation to put bio-attack of.
Gary, you said that you're operating on a, a series of best practices from people around the state.
Well, I guess I'm operating on their best practices, I'm trying to follow best practices, you know, which is we follow in Connecticut, two thousand two E S guidelines, and the two thousand four quality manual. It was really kind of dictating the best practices in development. For now, it was the best guidelines we had and.
So there, there isn't a written set of criteria that you use when you are using your discretion?
Um, the regulations.
Just the regulations, okay. I was gonna sug- suggest maybe some kind of subcommittee could work with you to find out what, where the line is, where we would feel comfortable as an agency, and where you would feel comfortable as an agent, just to make sure that we have space for each other to work, I suppose.
Well, I think Gary should be able to draw up guidelines and then have us look at it. Do you have a suggestion?
My only comment is, he still already has guidelines that aren't written, that he's using. You're not satisfied with those guidelines or his decisions on that, so what would you want as an agency? To have Gary comply with it. The regulations aren't clear. You can change the regs, put together a set of guidelines, that, what comes first, the chicken and egg, what are you looking for? What's Gary looking for? Maybe if he each drafted a set, he thinks something he thinks is based on his experience and opinion, these are the guidelines that I wouldn't, my gut tells me they're not gonna differ much from what he's using today. That doesn't satisfy all of you, so what would you like to see? Not, maybe not every single house, but you wanna see some houses.
Yeah, maybe within a hundred feet or something.
And then, if it's an industrial use that's outside, and you wanna understand if you wanna expand it past the three hundred feet, what type of things? And because right now, he's only looking at what's going on and not what you are, not necessarily what the risk may be in four hundred feet or five hundred feet. Because he's limited to the three hundred feet.
So what if we put a dollar amount on it? I mean.
I don't, I don't know. You'd have to talk to the prime town attorney, and this is, it really shouldn't be based on a dollar amount, some of the building, McMansion, that costs more than the gas station, so I don't know if a dollar amount's the right thing, honestly.
I might suggest kind of like our existing fee schedule is based on the disturbed area. So if you're disturbing over a certain amount, up to a thousand square feet, there's no additional fee beyond the base fee, but between a thousand and five thousand, thirty-two hundred bucks, from five thousand and greater, it's another seven fifty. And so you could keep adding fees, that said, if, you know, in that, if you wanna add more fees, that's gonna get a ton of force, so I don't know, that's not working. But, but yeah, something like that, you know, how much area are you disturbing?
Yeah, that's a good idea. Within the upland review area, is area disturbed, so if it's over a certain amount of square footage.
We already have that.
The fee.
Oh, the fee, oh yeah, fuck, sorry.
Not, not for.
Yeah, not for what we see.
You know, what's the threshold in which I would not issue a permit, you know, you gotta go to the commission.
Can I suggest that maybe we take time as individuals to come up with criteria that we would want?
Well, we bounced around for the last couple of months. Gary initially said that he was gonna come up with guidelines and you haven't been able to, so.
To the work of progress.
Just like we have so.
I mean, it'll, it'll happen, probably between now and January, but that'll be the time.
It's about transparency, right?
I think so, okay.
So I'm, I'm happy to draft up, where I think we might be some just general guidelines, I think it's an idea of doing a subcommittee to maybe discuss those. So we start with a draft, form a subcommittee, by then, maybe by January, we're gonna have a whole new, not whole commission, but we're gonna have some new members, and maybe a volunteer in that capacity, on a subcommittee again. And of course, David, we may, we don't know if he'll be here or not.
I don't think he'll.
Do you, maybe, because he was elected and he's still continuing to serve out this, which can.
Zoning alternate to the zoning board.
I don't know for sure, but normally he's serving on one commission.
Well, I am currently an alternate for Z B A as well. Now, that one obviously has to go. This all came about at the very last minute.
I would think, because planning commission members can't bring applications or go speak at zoning commissions and vice versa, I would think conservative approach.
I didn't, I didn't volunteer for this.
Do we have people in the works to join this commission?
Yeah, that was my next one.
Are we gonna be bare-boned?
You know, because at this point, we have really no alternates because the one person that's on the list hasn't shown up in a year.
Yeah.
Is that Sandy?
Yeah.
I mean, it's kind of ridiculous.
Well, we had Dr. Gregory McIntyre. Well, we had Dr. Gregory McIntyre.
He's.
Did he decline?
No, he he's on the commission.
He's never came.
Does he know that?
I believe so, he gets correspondence, they, he gets email on agendas, as we saw it. That might be a problem because for him, um, check.
Well, I know he's alive and kicking, cause I read his article or his editorial in the day today. Or his letter to the editor, sorry. He's out there somewhere.
What is his name?
Dr. Gregory McIntyre.
Yeah, so I guess touching back though on yours, on your subject, I think either we wanna go the route of a certain square footage disturbed within the upwind review area or even within a hundred feet of, you know, water course along that route, one or the other, really.
Well, I live, I live with a hundred foot, and if I have to come to a hearing for remodeling my bathroom, I would be upset.
Well, no, no, I mean, aside from the the pools, decks, the small, you know, if if it's.
Oh, okay.
So I think what she's saying is if you're gonna disturb a thousand square feet without a hundred feet of water course.
Oh, I got.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
That's the truth.
That's a bit.
Yeah.
How do you go beyond the three hundred feet then, which you all, many of you have expressed a concern?
That's already, we're already allowed to technically in the regulation.
But if there's no disturbance, and you're saying Gary can go, you won't see that. Or you can talk square footage in the area.
And that matters.
Some of you have expressed, listen to me as I do, that you wanna know beyond that. So I think you need to figure out what criteria you'd like to see that goes beyond, you know, that that square footage in the three hundred feet, and then what outside of that do you want?
Sounds like something the subcommittee could do, once people have ironed out what they want and Gary proposes something.
Um, I I would note the regulations as, you know, in terms of the definition of regulated activity, and this is where it comes from, is that it says here, the agency may rule that any other activity located within such upwind review area or in any other non-wetland or non-water course area is likely to impact or affect weapons or water courses is a regulated activity. Now, it's worded funny, I I think it should say that, instead of it is, but it's written the way it is written, so that's your discretion, if you will, to say, hey, that's gonna likely have an impact. Now, that pertains to the old gas station, we said, okay, that's likely gonna have an impact on the water course. Okay, you.
We have to prove that, though.
You have to demonstrate that somehow.
Yeah, we gotta prove it.
And I, you know, in the, you know, here, Mr. Dino, there's a resource out there who may be able to demonstrate that, hey. And maybe they bring that information before the commission and say, hey, there is an impact. And then this commission can say, you know what, we want a permit for the activity beyond the three hundred foot upwind review. I can run that by council and use that one bit. Yeah.
Okay.
Also, while we're talking about public trans- transparency, um, you have an awful lot of information that you know and share and and we are better for it. But I'm, I'm curious, um, why don't you get a microphone, why isn't it being recorded?
This one here, I can hold that one, uh, yeah, it's hard to pick up my voice under them, like, I usually grab one of these things.
Just to have one.
Yeah, I think it just is a matter of public record, and I mean, it would be nice if you got your own little mic. And I imagine it's not just at this meeting that we have this arrangement, I mean, a planning, you do something similar.
Same, same rate.
Yep.
Yeah.
So I guess all that knowledge is lost to the public, is what I'm kind of worried about, so I don't know.
Yeah, we can share all these million mics up here, who should have one?
I think four, one quarter of the stand.
Yeah.
I just, I I don't.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Well, I would think it's not lost, I mean, it's quite obvious it's part of the year.
I've never heard us, I've never watched us.
I've never read.
You've never watched?
No, I've never watched.
Someone may at some point. I think it's pretty low on the list of priorities, but I've always wondered about it.
All right, enforcement.
Yeah, I have a question, it's sort of odd, hold it, Gary. That word, someone brought to your attention some potential filling of land, a pond, previous pond.
Oh, yes, on North Brightbrook.
Is that something you're pursuing?
Yeah, something I'm pursuing.
Wait, a pond?
So, uh, on the North Brightbrook piece that the Pazaya construction proposed, there are a hundred units, which we denied. And then we subsequently proposed eighty units and moved through the building.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so there's an alleged pond that was filled. I went back there and took a look, that, looking at the aerial photos from two thousand sixteen, the area was not clear. So it's just vegetated with forest canopy. The, I think it was two thousand seventeen, it's on, or you can look at our G I S and look at those photos from year to year. And it shows up as a cleared area, I believe, we as an agency walked the site, we walked the stream. Uh, we actually gathered in this particular spot, and this was the area that was cleared for a landing, for some of the logging that was going on and getting back to where they installed silpass. I can ask that the landowner give me an additional soils report on that area. But in my opinion, I don't know that it delineated out as a pond or a wetland. I don't know how else to go back and determine whether or not it was a pond, though, a deep soil or moring of some sort. So we can have soil scientists go do that, demonstrate it's not a pond.
Also, and it's also told us creating a runoff problem on the joint property during the winter, cause it's, it's, it's no longer basically a catchphrase.
Ah, right.
Uh, cap- capture water.
So to the town.
Well, the site's been cleared, but it hasn't been cleared. This will be the first winter the site has been cleared. So I would just.
I don't know the details, I just.
No, I I did send a copy of the the plan to the individual who brought it to my attention, so me and I will talk and chat. And we are pursuing it, so we're looking into that complaint. Um, let's see where it goes.
Is it someone who lives in the neighborhood?
No.
That might have a picture?
Well, the the, it's a buying land owner.
So, so would it make sense to have the town hire a soil scientist to go in and test it to see if it was a pond?
Could, we have resources to do so, I could take a little bit of the budget and, I don't know, call some soil scientists and say, hey, but tell me if that was a pond.
I mean, because we always sit here and we listen to the applicant and their specialists, obviously, they're hired by the applicant, so they're always gonna support it. So, I mean, it it might be a good idea for the town just to hire soil scientists, independent soil scientists to go in.
That that said, I'm not saying it hasn't happened, cause I I certainly can see, but it hasn't, but I would think that most soil scientists in Connecticut, uh, you know, they they have some standard of ethics, work ethic, I guess, and I wouldn't wanna call it, but I would not, I would think that they wouldn't miss an entire pond. Along, say, if you're delineating a a stream, you're already identifying a water course on the property, what reason would you have to hide a pond?
Could it be a vertical pool?
Could be a vertical pool, in which case, you know, that's plausible to miss. Um, I'd be surprised if a soil scientist missed that, but.
Hmm.
Same for that.
But there is runoff, a runoff issue that the neighbor is complaining about?
They complained about that before, though, with that site, that site had a daily runoff big time.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, I'm not sure what the runoff issue was, an icing issue, or is it in the, in the winter, that?
That's what happened.
I think Ida did a lot of extra work, you know, month and a half ago, cutting through things.
I mean, I think the icing, the icing issue may have just been a long, might just be a longstanding issue that's always occurred. As I said, the site's just been cleared, so this will be the first winter without that vegetation. So it'll be interesting, we'll probably have, you know, additional runoff, so there could be additional icing on it, but, uh.
But the area of the pond hasn't just recently been cleared.
No, that was, it showed up in the two thousand sixteen area, I think, or in two thousand seventeen.
So any clearing from the current project is?
It's cleared, I mean, they cleared the entire lot now.
Yeah.
And then you, if you go to the extent of that clearing, there's a little trail that goes up, and then there's another large cleared area. It's an oval shape, um, probably about half the size of a football field, can can I go just a little wide? But it's a fairly large area, and we clearly moved large equipment around in there yet.
It's also told there was quite a bit of vegetation debris that was in that area. Deposited in the area.
Oh, people dumped it, stuff.
Tree stumps and tree.
So I don't know, human memory is valuable, but I don't remember there being a pond when we walked up there, like, I mean.
Well, remember, we went up to where the cliffs were, and then behind that, the water came through, and then in the distance, you could see, I don't, is that where it is, like?
No, it's actually, it's it's.
Towards ninety-five?
Uh, it's on the east side of the stream, it's on the North Ri- North Brightbrook side of the stream. So it's in the, it's just beyond what will be the limit of clearing for the proposed development. If the appeal is overturned, this area will be cleared for a build.
Oh.
Was it where that, where the road where we parked, that driveway, up there to the left?
So you, you, the the driveway that we pulled in, uh, you go to, you're facing the lot you pull in, you go up to the right, that's it.
Mm-hmm. Okay, it's hard, we didn't walk every foot of the property.
Feels like we did, we were out there.
We were, but.
We walked around pretty much of it, though.
Yeah.
Yeah. And that property, just being close to the water there, the salmon run, we gotta be careful that there's not runoff happening from there.
Um, so I suppose, I have some pictures you need to cut up, some of the site that's on.
That wasn't cleared when we went up there, right, like that?
It was.
Oh, it was, that was.
I'm starting.
Oh, okay, I'm I'm picturing it now, okay.
Cause the stream is right.
Right there on the left.
So that's just kind of.
Okay.
So are we, at this point, recommending any action, like looking into?
Well, you're, he's looking into it.
I'm looking into it as part of enforcement action, there's a potential.
Okay, so we're just being informed with that?
Yep.
Okay, thank you for informing us.
I have one other thing, since we have an empty room here. Um, we have in the past had an attorney come in and kind of give us an idea of, you know, our legal, what our responsibilities are, and maybe some of Robert's rules as far as, you know, when you um, should you be present during a public hearing to be able to vote on it? You know, I don't know. Do you have enough information, does a person have enough information to be able to vote on it? Or should they excuse themselves, you're close?
Uh, for public hearings, the the rule of thumb there is if you missed a meeting, um, that you would review the recording. And at that next meeting, if you wanted to vote, you could say, hey, I brought myself, you could go on the record and tell them, I want to see, I brought myself up to speed. Um, you know, I I've seen commissioners not even go that far and say, I brought myself up to speed, I'm sitting to vote, not to accuse themselves.
Are you asking if Gary would invite someone in?
Yeah, we, well, we used to have a lawyer come in.
Yeah.
And it's, it's probably a good refresher, of course, particularly, we've got, you know.
Turnover.
Turnover, a lot of turnover.
Yeah, I did.
Maybe like, uh, beginning of the year, January, February.
When I first came on, they did it, I remember that, third day of the day.
Yeah, yeah.
So I can set that up for January?
Yeah, it was the older guy, I don't remember my soul.
It was, yeah, Ed Ed O'Connell.
Yeah.
I think he's kind of taking the backseat now, and Tracy Collins has taken over.
Tracy Collins is the primary town attorney. Ed O'Connell is a little bit more of the semi-retired, he's mostly retired, but he is available.
And Mark Zomarka is the other attorney that we use for them as well. So Tracy or Mark could come in and do that, yeah, I can set that up for you.
I think that would be great, I sat through a workshop put on by the state about land use agencies, and it was dreadful. But I've heard that these things that Dave is referring to and Phil is referring to have been very helpful for members in the panel.
I do know that Connecticut Deep has on their website, you can take the commissioners training program. Um, I think they have some difficulty through COVID with it, unfortunately, it like broke down, and nobody could take that shit, of course, I think Dave was able to get pre-COVID and finish.
I took it during COVID.
Did you during COVID?
Yeah, I did, I did that.
You did?
Big class, oh, yeah.
Yeah, it was like eight or ten hours.
I was like right at the start, though, I think, right, of COVID.
I did it the first weekend, yeah, because we.
The last time I checked, I was not able to access the site to.
Yeah, it was like eight or ten segments, and you have to take a test, or the computer won't let you move forward. And then you think you can go back and take the test, but it doesn't have the same questions, so you.
Oh.
So I I was going to just send that link out to the agency so that you can have it and you can have that resource available, uh, as soon as access is.
I learned a lot from it, I have to say that, it was very informative.
Yep. So, yeah, I can set that up for January, but part of that training program, usually it's the second two, they usually go over all the legacies and the things that have changed over the course of the year. So I'll find interested.
Well, the same question pertained, do you have to do a site walk in order to vote?
No.
Or is that not required?
That is not required.
Cause I didn't go last Saturday, so.
Oh, but you can look at the.
My wife would have killed me. It's my fiftieth anniversary.
Good choice.
Yes, next move.
All right, on that note, are we all done?
Uh, correspondent?
Um, I, I don't have any to hand out, so. You got Eastern Connecticut Conservation District, Paul pamphlet, I'll maybe email that out.
I'll wait for it eagerly.
All right. Somebody wanna make a motion to adjourn?
I'm going for adjourn.
Second. All is in paper?
Aye.
G eight ten, eight oh eight.